David Paradise.
Erwin Moyno.
Tom Marslick.
Sam Solars.
Jessica Bonniewall.
Jared Vogi.
Michael Summerville.
Dan Reamer.
Invocation?
How's everybody tonight?
Good.
Good. You know, I was thinking today, I think every time I've come to do an invocation, I always somehow wind up talking about wisdom. Have you noticed that? But I actually asked God what he wants to focus on, and here we are again. So I was thinking today about how the Bible talks so much. It has a lot to say about both wisdom and wise leaders and fools and foolish leaders. There's a lot to say. And what sets them apart is not just their integrity or their ability to follow God, but it's whether or not they actually seek God and ask Him for wisdom. You can go through Genesis to Revelation, and it's very clear. They would have to ask, you know, back in those days, like King David, should we go attack this enemy, or should we retreat, or should we do this or that? And God always answered them, and God will always answer us too. Asking God for wisdom is a key to, I believe with all my heart, a key to the success of every city, every state, and every nation, and actually every individual life. And God says in James 1:5 that if anyone lacks wisdom, he should ask God, and he'll give it generously without finding fault. So I'm so glad we have that ability, and because the Bible says sometimes we have not because we ask not, well, we're asking tonight for wisdom. And I encourage you to always ask God for wisdom as you lead. Proverbs 12:15 talks about fools. So I was thinking it'd say about wisdom, or wise and foolish people. Proverbs 12:15 talks about that fools think their own way is right, and their ears are closed to godly wisdom. Fools despise wisdom and instruction. In other words, they're going la, 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 and they've already decided what they're gonna do, what they want to do, what's best, and they aren't listening to the godly counsel of people around them. So I encourage you to keep your ears open. Romans 13:1 says that all authorities on the earth have been established by God. This council has been established by God, so you're all on divine assignment from God Himself. Lord, I ask that you would give this council a spirit of unity tonight, grant them wisdom and courage to do what's right and just, give them discernment, respect for one another, and humble hearts. And Lord, we do pray for the upcoming local and national elections. Lord, we ask that there would be election integrity, that you would raise up leaders for this nation, for this city, and for our state that would be godly leaders, and that you would remove from office any and all that are destroying our cities, states, and nations. Lord, we commit this night to you, this meeting to you, and we commit the city of Montrose to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approve of the agenda. We need to make one amendment and add.
We need to make two.
Two amendments.
Yep.
The first one is adding under Park and Rec, the Park and Rec minutes from June 20th, 2022.
Second item would be item 8B2 under the fire department to get approval to burn the brush pile at the compost site.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second?
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0.
4-0.
4-0, sorry. It's gonna get tough to get used to. Approve of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 4-0. Wright County Sheriff's Office.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me here tonight. It's been kind of a busy month. Since the last council meeting on the 13th, we had 191 calls for service. Ninety-nine of those were incident reports. We had 47 traffic stops, 11 resulted in citations. We've also had five in custody arrests. Charges were fifth-degree drugs with obstruct legal process, a second-degree DUI, a court order violation, and fleeing a police officer, a child neglect endangerment, and a domestic assault charge. Other than that, we haven't, we've had a few complaints on Clementa for speed. Some of our deputies have been sitting out there, and we've gotten some speeds up to like the 50s. Most of it's been about 36, 40. Took another complaint on Whitetail, is it Whitetail Run or Ridge, of traffic going through there fast. The speed limit's 30 miles per hour, and the fastest car I observed was about 32, 33. But a car going 32 appears to be flying through the neighborhood. So I don't, I don't think anyone's, I haven't seen any violations of the speed limit there. Other than that, I, we haven't had too many issues. We had some dirt bike complaints maybe a month ago, but as of this month, I haven't heard anything. So I think that's been resolved. Is there any questions from you guys?
I don't think so.
No, I don't either.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
City Council?
At Park and Rec meeting, Fire Department meeting, and Wright County EDA meeting.
Had the council meeting and met with a new pastor in town who is looking to do outreach in the community.
Since I was gone all June, I had the Wright County Board of Commissioners meeting.
Council meeting and Lima Soto Cities Conference.
You wanna give a rundown of your conference? I'm just saying that to make Kevin wait, so.
Oh, you wanna make him wait? Come on up, Kevin.
Fire Department.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Attachment in your packet is the activity report for June. One thing to kind of note, it was actually a slow month for us until about the 20th of June hit. We ended up running about 22 calls in a 10-day span, so we were really busy towards the end of the month. Other than that, nothing big to report. I would just like to make a, kind of make note of the acknowledgements. First is just to my officer group for helping during a busy month while I was tied up with some work and personal items that kept me busy for about a week and a week and a half or so. Thank you to the firefighters who've been participating in the neighboring city parades. Mike Markton, he went around town and checked all the fire department lock boxes. And then Carl's Brothers, they donated two cars for auto extrication training. Keighley Underground for helping us move and smash those cars for auto extrication training, and Craft, Pattern, and Mold for allowing us to use their property for high-flow water training. And that's all I have on that. The other item is I would just like authorization to do the brush pile, just to get your guys' blessing to do it, so.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to go ahead and allow the brush burn.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Who provides the marshmallows? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 4-0.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Park and Rec.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Parks and Rec met today in a special meeting, and we voted on and making a recommendation from the memo from Bolton and Mink that's dated July 7th, 2022. There was four cost reduction options there, and the Park and Rec Commission voted to approve, to reduce costs and approve option 1, 2, and 3, and not option 4. So the total savings that you'd be looking at, a total of $110,000. And so our recommendation is to proceed with the plan, with those options, cost reductions in place. This would give you the, I think the kind of identity or building, you're looking for that area out there, you'll make a statement. This is gonna be a beautiful building. But unfortunately, with the grant, with the DNR, I think it's July 2023, so we have to move very quickly on this recommendation and an approval from the City Council so we can move forward. So that's kind of where we're at. Any questions?
Duane, what's our grand total then?
I'm sorry.
What's our grand total?
I think the original grand total was 810,000, 810, I think. So on a.
700?
Yeah, we're looking at roughly a $700,000 estimate.
That's a lot of car washes and big sales.
Yeah, it's about 698,880, with eliminating the glue lamps, the stone cladding, and windows.
And the grant covers 250,000 of that, correct?
Correct. And the city currently has about 250, a little bit more than that, saved up for this project.
And I also think with the, is it the L, 100,000 per year?
The 100,000 per year is just the city levy money that we put towards the park development.
I mean, we'll be about 100,000 short possibly, but the longer we wait on construction, the more you run a risk of, yeah, you run a risk of higher, higher costs for building supplies. And you already been sitting on this grant, I understand, since 2017, so I hate to see 250,000 not take advantage of this grant. And plus, that area out there, they need something. Montrose needs something out there in that area. This would be a huge statement, I think, by the council and the park commission.
Did we not just?
We received the grant in 2021.
Thank you. Okay, I just wanted to make that clear.
Or we were approved for it. We haven't received the money.
Got it.
And what's in the park fund?
Between 250 and 300,000.
So we just started last year budgeting 150,000 to start ramping up because we got approved for this 250,000 grant. So it is building, but there will be a shortfall. We would dip in to go ahead with this process. Not only would we be adding another 150,000 to the park development fund in the coming year, but we'd also likely dip into our capital improvement fund.
Okay. Is there any other questions for the Park and Rec Commission? Hearing none, I will make a motion to accept the Park and Rec recommendation to reduce costs using options 1, 2, and 3, not option 4. Oh, okay, that's.
Sorry.
All right. Well, then I'll strike that, and we will approve the recommendation to use option 4, not 1, 2, and 3. Do I hear a second?
Just having a hard time trying to figure out.
Yeah.
Where we're gonna move money from.
If we want to, if you want Jared to answer any questions as well, that was kind of the next item on our agenda, was the park shelter. The Park and Rec was just making the recommendation that they saw fit, so.
I share your concerns on where the money's gonna come from.
When talking with Jared at the special meeting, this is just an estimate. It's not an actual bid. So the bid could come down a whole, I mean, it could come down quite a substantial amount, because we do have to still go out for bids. So this is not really.
I understand that.
In the same sense, it could still go up.
It's a proposal.
It can go up and it can go down. I mean.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
Right. So, I mean, you have to.
Yeah, and Park and Rec chose to execute options 1, 2, and 3, which be to eliminate the glue lamps, the stone cladding, and the windows. Option 4 is to reduce the shelter size in half. So there's no option, I mean, there is an option 4, but that would be to eliminate, or to reduce it by half.
No, if we were to go forward.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think reducing it, why build it if you're gonna reduce it in half?
Was your recommendation to reduce it in half or to get rid of the other stuff?
No, to get rid of the first three.
The recommendation was to reduce costs would be to look at option 1, 2, and 3, and 4 was not, not to reduce it, not to reduce the shelter in half.
When do we expect final bids in, Duane?
I'm sorry, Tom, I can hurry.
When do we expect final bids in?
So we're gonna have to come up with a plan, correct, and then put that out for bids if it all gets approved?
Yeah, so Mayor, Council, if Council decides to move forward with the reduction in cost, which would be to eliminate option 1, 2, and 3, DNR has indicated that they would be open to an extension, but what I would, what I would recommend is that if this continues to move forward, we identify a schedule and identify those milestone dates to submit everything. For example, submit the plans to the DNR for approval, obtain bids, start construction, then finish construction. So, I mean, conceivably bids could be acquired, you know, yet later this fall, for sure, so that they could get started, but the project just wouldn't, depending on the outcome, the project, it's uncertain that it would, well, we know it wouldn't be finished by June 30th of 2023, so.
Yeah, you know, due to the nature of construction, usually bids go up and not down. So that is a concern I have. I mean, I certainly would want not to exceed this number anywhere, you know? I mean, we're having a hard enough time figuring out where the money's gonna come at this number, so.
And just to be clear, so once, once the city goes out for bids, because bids are required, the competitive bidding process is required, those bids will come back to council, and you'll have another opportunity to decide whether or not you continue to move it forward. Ultimately, until you award the bids, you still have an out, if you will.
Right, okay.
See where the bids come in?
Yeah. We still have Kirby's motion on the floor.
Kirby's motion is still on the floor to approve, approve it with eliminating those three options.
I'll second that motion. Further discussion?
Just looking at, Jess, I know we talked about it in Park and Rec, but at what point can we get something together for, say, a sponsorship package from businesses around town to help, maybe with the added cost of this?
I'm not sure how sponsors, sponsor, sponsorships work. We've not really had that. Do you, are you familiar with that, Jared?
Not specific to a park shelter, but I know that other sponsorships have identified different tiers of sponsorships and.
Is that something that?
Recommended levels.
Would it be possible to get money for the shelter?
Is it, yeah, does it conflict with getting the grant from the DNRs, or?
Well, the DNR grant is, it's 50-50, right? So it's local, and then the DNR, and where that local comes from, I mean, we can check with them, but I don't anticipate that they would, as long as the source.
And I know we're in for the 250 automatically. It's just a matter of trying to find this $200,000, so it doesn't have to come out of capital gains or.
Would that be a question that Abdo could help to answer?
Either them or the city attorney.
I think that's an option we need to explore.
Yep.
Even before we get any bids coming in, just to kind of see what, what interest levels we have from around town.
Yeah, I agree. At this point, I don't see any reason why they're, to not at least get bids.
So the motion that's on the table is just to approve?
Their recommendations.
To go forward with plans.
Correct. Their recommendations, yeah. Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 4-0.
Thanks, Duane. Thanks, Duane.
Thank you.
Thank you, Duane.
City Engineer?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The first item here this evening is the Phase 1 Pay Application Number 4. That pay estimate was included in your packet, and the pay estimate to Keighley Underground is in the amount of $1,38,348.85. With the payment of this estimate, that reflects that the project is approximately 40% complete from the overall project bid, so things continue to move along there, and it is our, we've reviewed the pay estimate and recommended its approval. I'd be happy to stand for any questions that you might have.
Have they had any other issues that have come up? Or any issues at all, really?
Nothing substantial, no. Lot of coordination with utility companies.
It's been the biggest problem.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve Pay Application Number 4 to Keighley Underground.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Oh, yes. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Second item under my report this evening is related to the Phase 2 of the downtown improvement project, or the north side with Northdale Construction. So there's a pay estimate enclosed. That pay estimate's in the amount of $344,494.56. That reflects approximately 38% of the overall contract completion amount. The, so that's the first item there. Also, you'll note that change order number 1 is enclosed in the packet this evening, and that's related to the construction of the privacy fence previously approved for 271 First Street North. As part of the contract documents, a chain link fence was identified in the, in the documents, and the change order reflects the cost associated with the, with the privacy fence that was discussed at a previous meeting. So that change order is also there for council's consideration to move forward. It is not, that work has not been authorized until. They'll approve it.
That's two separate ones to approve, correct? Okay.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the Pay Application Number 3 for Northdale Construction.
Second.
Further discussion? I'll vote yes, Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. I'll also make a motion to approve Change Order Number 1.
I will second.
Further discussion? Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 4-0.
And the only, the only other things I'd offer relative to those projects, we're anticipating, based on the contractor, or correspondence with the contractor, Phase 1 on this side of the tracks, they're anticipating about another 30 days of pipe work. So the excavators will be around for, if, weather-dependent, of course, but about 30 days, and then we can get some more of the streets put back together. On the north side, they are working on what we call subcutting. They're excavating the materials so they can bring gravel and sand back in and start building that road back up. So I would, I would anticipate, or in my opinion, the projects continue to be on schedule, so that's a good thing. And with that, I'll stand for any questions Council may have.
The only question I have is that, so when Charity Lane goes up by Carver Field, now that's gonna be a through road, is there gonna be like a stop sign there, or a yield sign, or any kind of traffic control like that? On the evenings that is, that it has been left open without construction equipment by it, the people who live by there have reported that people like to try to use that as a jump to get out by Carver Field.
I can look into that, Mayor. The, I know we have a signage plan as part of the contract documents. I don't have that with me this evening, but if, if that's been, if that's an issue right now, we can also look at doing something in the interim to.
Putting something up to close it off?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have two? Anything on Overston Development?
Say that again?
Overston?
Yeah.
Anything, any updates there?
I just, the only update I have is that we're waiting for them to come in and sign the developer agreement. Same thing with. LGI Development. They're also working on, they just got us some information for the engineers to look over the line of credit, to approve that, so we can finalize the developer agreement and get that signed and finalized. We also received a development application today for Creekside Hollow, which is south of Cole Avenue in Forest Creek.
Nice. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jared? Thanks, Jared.
Thank you.
Public Works?
Mayor, Council, we are currently obviously working on parks. We have two guys doing all of our parks in town, so I hope the people here will bear with. We did hire out mowing this year, which in turn, we did not hire out summer help. And without our summer help, things are going slow. I know there was a lot of complaints on Facebook, and when you only got two guys working on parks at a time, it just takes time. So hopefully people bear with that. Next year, I would like to, at least, there was at one point here where we had three summer helpers, so. I want to look at that next year. I came into it a little late in April, so. And with the contract with the mower, we'll relook at that again, but he is contracted just to mow. Mow and weed whip, that's it. Not inside any structures, not take care of playground equipment. That's all, if anybody has that question, that's all he's there for. And it was approved for him to, he does get paid whether he mows, if it requires him mowing or not, like a daycare. Whether he's mowing or not, he gets paid weekly. So we are, the guys at the wastewater plant are extremely busy out there also, trying to keep things looking good. We're going through permit renewal, getting information. I am also running around town, taking care of complaints about construction. So we are extremely, extremely busy. That's all I got.
Any, any updates on what parks were actually cleaned up this week, just?
Yes. These guys just moved on from veterans. They went to Rock Brook. They started it toward the end of the day. Yes, um, these guys just moved on from veterans. They went to Rock Brook. They started it toward the end of the day. Um, we did get a load of wood chips in a week, about a week and a half ago. Um, that took a little, like everything else, everything's a little behind, so that took a little time. Um, they are spraying some parks and posting them for weeds. Um, I believe from there, Coco, you guys will be moving toward North Ridge. So let's, you know, we got two guys instead of usually three or four, you know, without summer help. So it, it takes time. And obviously, things come up with the construction and where I gotta pull the guys off for a while. And other stuff needs to be handled, so. Just want the citizens to bear in mind that stuff. And they will be going from one park to the next till they're all, you know, hopefully in tip-top shape, but it's going to take time. Any other questions?
Anything else for Dan? Thanks, Dan.
Yep.
Uh, on to old business, ABDO Professional Services.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, we brought to you a proposal from ABDO Financial Solutions, who also do our audit last month. Um, looking for some direction and approval for accounting services at an hourly rate for budget assistance. For, this will be my first year budgeting without our previous city clerk treasurer, Wendy. I think just, we're likely going to be developing a long-term financial plan next year to update our capital improvement plan from five years ago. So I'd like to get started on pretty much the right foot with ABDO's help. As well as council and mayor, um, for budgeting this year.
When do you start the budgeting process?
That'll be starting next month.
Very soon. Staff would just be looking for approval to use ABDO for their hourly services, um, for budgeting. And perhaps down the road, do we want to do the quarterly, uh, reporting right away?
Reporting is another service they offered. It would pretty much be a somewhat of a quarterly mini audit. That would be more so if council is interested in receiving a more in-depth report on the state of finances in the city.
Throughout the years.
And that would be, I, I would foresee that more as temporary, just to see what their package looks like. And, and then I would perpetuate that, you know, in the years to come. That would really be more if council's interested in having more of a quarterly report.
Would the quarterly report help you with the annual report done?
Yes, it would.
So.
Based on recommendations.
It would help give, um, like a quarterly snapshot to council on where we're at financially.
Mm-hmm. But is it going to make ABDO's job any easier when I go to do the annual audit?
Yes, that was, it was their recommendation.
Okay, that's, that's kind of where I was going with that.
And also, I saw that as a potential tool for looking at, you know, as we've discussed in recent meetings, some larger financial expenditures, looking at building new plants. But just having more of a snapshot quarterly and then leading into next year with some long-term financial planning. Where, where the dollars are going to come, as we've seen, everything we tried to build or propose is going up considerably in price.
I think anything that can help you and the city should be moved on, so.
Especially if you're looking at updating the budget process from how it was previously done. So what are you exactly looking for? What kind of emotion do you want?
Yeah, just a motion to approve the hourly services and then their quarterly financial reporting.
Okay.
And, and the quarterly financial reporting will knock down how much they'll have to do at the end of the year, which will.
It'll, I think it'll help them be able to do it fairly quickly.
And reduce that price.
Quickly.
Okay.
Because it's, I think it was one thousand nine hundred dollars a quarter for the quarterly reporting. Otherwise, if you just want to start with hourly, we can do that. And if it's working out, then we can maybe talk about quarterly down the road. It's up to you guys.
No, I think, I think we ought to commit to the hourly and the quarterly.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we commit to the budget assistance hourly rate and the quarterly financial reporting from ABDO.
I'll second.
Further discussion. Approving this, we, when, how long are we committed for using their services? If you don't like it, can we back out at any time or?
They had outlined services for two years just based on what their recommendations were. And they had recommended phasing in, long-term planning.
But I think we can just use.
Discuss that in the next year. We would only be committing to what we would be taking up in this coming year.
Okay.
Yeah, and it would be just as needed, so.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes four zero. Uh, Montrose Days follow-up.
Uh, mayor and council, at the June meeting, we had table, or you guys had tabled the discussion for Montrose Days. And so we were coming back to follow up about that. I believe Montrose Days has been canceled for this year.
They announced that they canceled for this year, yes.
I don't know that we need to have much discussion on that, other than just announcing that.
I would agree. I don't think we need to follow up on what we discussed last month, so. Uh, new business, Boy Scout Summer Event.
I, I handed them out to him. Yep. Um, these guys don't have them, yeah. We can pass them down.
Mayor, council, Greg Hume, three-three-five Garfield Avenue South. Want to talk to you a little bit about an event. Obviously, we were disappointed with the cancellation of Montrose Days. This would have been three years without a, an official event for Montrose. Um, so we got together with scouts and decided we were going to put on an event for the community. Event will focus on community involvement, uh, meet and greet, community service organizations, and youth enrichment organizations within, within Montrose. Um, I've talked initially with Jessica, I've talked initially with Dan as well, in reference to the event, and have done some initial planning. And what you have in front of you is a draft event, um, thing for that, that will be finalized once we get everything in place. And we'll actually flyer the community. Uh, the scouts have agreed to go door-to-door for that. Um, you'll see that scouts will be selling burgers, fries, and hopefully cheese curds, if I have sourcing down for that. Uh, twelve to eight on that one, uh, also sodas. I've talked with Brian Baumann at Jackie B's. He's on board with that. A couple of issues we would like to have from the city council during your next meeting would be an approval to close the street for the event from twelve to eight during that period. Uh, that was already in play, I guess, for Montrose Days, so the information's already worked up. And then also, in reference to getting an extension of premise for Jackie B's to allow alcohol, uh, drinks to be carried across over into the park, okay?
One other thing I forgot about that, Greg, was that Jackie B's will also have to have, um, they'll have to talk to their insurance company to have liability insurance. It has to cover that extension. And that has to be submitted to the city.
Okay, um, I've talked, um, we'll cover the cost of a couple of bounce houses out there as well. Talked with Dan about being able to get a hookup to the fire, fire, um, system to do a splice court on the tennis courts over there as well. Looked at doing some youth games. I've got a soft dip archery. We'll do some leaky cup races, et cetera, water sport games. Also some, uh, super soaker target ranges, et cetera, something like that. Looking to get some support for us, to help with that as well from other organization, other youth groups. Uh, the Montrose Wayward Chamber of Commerce have agreed to do a beanbag tournament with proceeds to benefit the regional park shelter. Uh, so they're gonna, they're gonna carry that one and take care of that. So that just came up on, on board this weekend. We'll also have beanbag free play after that. We'll have community service organizations to be able to put up booths and have a meet and greet with that, as well as provide information as far as their organizations. Fire department, hopefully they'll be able to do some recruitment there. And I've talked with Kevin in reference to maybe having a walkthrough on a, on a fire truck there for the kids as well. He's going to get that to his team and see what they do far, as far as approval and get back with me. Also with, uh, we'll have the VSO, Veteran Service Officer there, VFW. And then, um, uh, Montrose Lions Club's talking about doing, um, root beer floats, so they'll be here as well. Um, Montrose Days Committee, but I haven't gotten a commitment on that, and maybe they can flush out some of their, their shortfalls. Uh, and then youth groups, we're looking at being able to have Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, hockey if they're available, and the Montrose Royalty. And then also, I have a, a lead from the Coast Guard Auxiliary, which is their youth organization called The Floaties. Uh, we'll have free icy pops donated by Dollar General. I've got about two thousand icy pops in the freezer right now. And they'll have free icy pops for anyone who visits one of the youth group booths. Um, and then we'll need to do some cleanup in the park as well, so the scouts will be on board for that. I'm sure there will be some on the, on the ground. Um, and then we'll do a gourmet cupcake walk to raise funds for the Scout Alaska trip in, in next year. I'm also working on trying to get a DJ and a possibility of having a street dance from four to eight, so I'll see whether that goes. And I'm also working on the KRWC Road Show to have them there from one to three. Uh, Citizen State Bank has agreed to, to provide some of the funding for that road show. Subject to your questions, um, I'm looking forward to a good event. I just want to bring you in, on board with it, make sure you guys are on board. I would appreciate you guys being out there as well and supporting the event. It's a meet and greet, community, uh, community event. And we want to make sure that's a given. I don't want to see three years go by without having some type of community event in Montrose. And that's the reason for bringing this on board this time.
Yeah. Greg, have you touched base with Mark Schlossner, the new pastor at Methodist Church?
Um, I have touched base with him. I haven't, uh, I've talked to him about the event, and he hasn't committed to anything yet, so he is aware of it.
Okay, he's aware of it, okay. Yeah, because he seems to have a genuine interest in getting involved and getting things going, so.
So, um, he, he's on board, well, he's not on board yet, but I want to get him involved in it. Also talked with Kathy, with the Grace Place. I have not talked with the, the other church in town yet, but I will do that. So I'm going to get them involved as well, so that they have an, an opportunity for members in the community to find out what's available in Montrose as far as, um, service organizations, church groups, youth, enrichment, that type of stuff.
Okay.
Super?
Good, yeah.
Any questions? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
You bet.
Uh, ARPA Funds, American Rescue Plan Act.
Uh, mayor and council, we just recently received our second, um, amount of the American Rescue Plan fund money for a total of three hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and twelve cents. I know Kevin was thinking he might want to spend some of it on a generator, correct? The rest of it, we're hoping to maybe spend on the road project. You can spend it on water and sewer infrastructure.
I think any less of a tax burden we can put on everybody is better.
How, how serious are we about the generator? Do you know exactly, do you know how much at all?
No, I just started the process. I just had an estimator out today. They should get back to me in the next couple of weeks with the final figures and stuff. But that generator would supply power to power everything in the community center and the fire station. So it's a, an emergency management type function. It would be a standby generator, probably put back by the air conditioners. So the minute we would lose power, power would just come back on.
Is that like a gen rack or something like that?
Something like that, yep.
So I think we would just need a motion to approve, um, spending the money on a generator and then the road project.
I'll make a motion to approve the spending of the American Rescue Plan Act towards the generator and the rest going towards the road project.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes four zero. Fire department funding.
Mayor and council, uh, the city staff, um, was informed this year by Wright County that we will no longer be able to collect funds for the fire department the way we have been doing it in the past. Um, in the past, we have been assessing each parcel, one hundred and fifty dollars for fire department service. Wright County is no longer allowing us to do that, and our city attorney and auditors agree with that, um, that we should not be doing it that, that way. So the fire department funding will have to come out of our levy going forward. Just wanted to let you guys know that fact, just, um, going into budgeting here. Just because it's new this year and it'll probably take a bite out of us, at least that, this first year, so.
What was their reasoning? Just, you don't like it, sorry?
Well, it's just not the way that they allow anybody to really do it anymore, um, because assessments are, are supposed to be for actual services, correct? That are rendered, um, on properties. So you could assess somebody if you went and like put out a fire at their property. But we shouldn't be doing it just to collect our, our funds, our general funds for the fire department.
So it's going to look like people's taxes are going up.
Correct.
By a hundred and fifty dollars, but it's just moving from one spot to another.
Yeah, because if you look on the tax statements now, there's a, it should say special assessment fire department, a hundred and fifty dollars. That just won't be there anymore. It'll just be part of your taxes for your property.
And this is a county thing, right? Was this a county thing?
Yeah, this came from Wright County initially, yep. And so we will still be entering into contracts with the townships, um, that we also have fire service in and collecting money from them the same way we have been. They will just have to deal with it however they do it on their own, but we need to correct it going forward. And that's just an FYI.
As we get closer to the end of the year, could we get like an example, like tax statement showing what it looked like before and what it would look like after?
Yeah, I think once we get through the budgeting process and have a better idea of our tax capacity and stuff, we should be able to estimate some of that.
Okay. I think that'd be good to see.
Yep.
Uh, anything else on the fire department funding?
Nope, just, just that.
Uh, open forum, Tina Hanson.
Please state your name and address.
Tina Hanson, six oh nine Fairmount Avenue, North, Montrose, Minnesota. Um, I was just coming in tonight just to talk about the park situation with North Ridge Park in particular. I had family from out of town this last weekend, and we went to the park, and obviously I don't go there very often, and I was kind of amazed at how it looked. And I understand we only have two people, um, that do that, and for all the parks we have, I don't know how that's sustainable for the summer to keep up on it. It's just not. So, you know, as a community, what can we be doing? I mean, I'm fine pulling weeds, but it's just going to keep coming back. And what can I use on the property and what is going on? And this was my worry when this, um, ice rink came in right behind my house. It's atrocious. Are we going to utilize that during the summer or just the two months out of the winter? Because it looks really bad, you guys.
I know eventually with that hockey rink, there, it's going to be, uh, cement, concrete in there so that it can be used all seasons and not get all weedy and grassy like it is.
What's the projected? Is that like a year? Is that two years?
We had never discussed the timeframe. That was with the previous public works director that that was discussed.
Okay, is that going to be something up for discussion or what, you know?
Dan, is that something we could look at in, at some point in the future, maybe when the road construction is done or?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like a tarred concrete. That way we ain't got to take care of the weeds inside of it. Rollerball.
Yeah, you can play.
Roller hockey.
It's fine. Um, but there's lots of things you can do with it, but I just, I just kind of want to know what a resolution. I mean, what can I use out there? Can we use any chemicals to kill the weeds?
If you do, you got to post it.
What do you guys use?
Spray something. Yeah, we use, we got little postings we put up.
But what do you use? What product?
Well, it's called Veggie Kill. Um, well, it's called Veggie Kill. It's, uh, sold to us by Mark Companies.
Okay.
Um, either that, it's Cornerstone. It's like a generic weed killer that we get in bulk from the country store in Howard Lake. So those are the two things that we do a kill all with.
So you'd said earlier, Northridge is one of the next ones on the list.
Yep.
Is, so is weed spraying gonna be part of what you do when you guys go out there?
We're hoping to get inside there and brush hog it or mow it down, then do a total kill on the inside, yeah.
Do you need an app? Do we have an applicator's license for that, or is that required? Dan?
I have no idea. I'll be honest with you, we've always sprayed weed killer here, hill, here without applicator's license.
Can we do that? I mean, as a community, can, I mean, it's really not that big of a deal to go spray. I mean, if we can get a group of people together on a, on a Saturday morning and just go take care of it, I mean, is that feasible?
Using city equipment?
Well, I don't know what the sprayer is. I don't even know what that looks like. I, I'm just trying to find a solution for you guys and not, you know, to kind of ease your burden a little bit.
I don't know if I'd feel comfortable using, letting citizens use city equipment, because then there's liability issues there.
Plenty of people have sprayers. I have.
If you wanna use your own equipment, yeah, I mean...
I, I just, because by the time you guys get to Northridge, the other parks are gonna be overgrown. It's just gonna be never ending. I mean, also, can we hire some kids? Is that, is that possible at what, 15 bucks an hour or whatever?
Yeah, I don't know about kids spraying chemicals.
Well, you know what I mean, but like younger.
I, I, we did post at one point, and I don't think we got anybody, right?
We didn't post this year because of the mowing.
Because of the mowing.
And I can say that's...
That's certainly an option if we want to hire, try to hire summer help at this point.
Right.
I don't know how successful that's gonna be, but...
I, I can say that other cities are dealing with the exact same thing. Buffalo, for example, they can't get enough people to come, and they're chasing their tail as far as cleaning up the parks go, too. It's just, I, I mean, it sucks. I totally understand the whole complaints about it, but it's just the way it is right now, and for whatever reason, you know, kids just don't want to come and, you know, pull weeds, you know? It's, it's horrible, but, you know, it's kind of, you know, these guys are busting their butts, and I'd like to see it done, too, so, I mean, anything that we can possibly do to eliminate some weeds, I mean, we can go out and spray and whatever, you know? I guess it's up to, I mean, Dan, what he feels comfortable doing, you know?
What's, what's that, though?
I guess, what, I mean, what do you feel comfortable allowing them to do? I mean, if they went out there with their own backpack sprayer and, you know, can of Roundup...
As long as they let us know what they sprayed. I mean, somebody communicate with the city, call City Hall and say, hey, we sprayed the rink Saturday.
We sprayed enough, we're gonna have a whole...
So we ain't double spraying it, but remind you, there is liability issues here.
Right.
So...
I don't believe that we can have the residents work on the parks.
There's...
I'm just trying to find a solution.
And I understand, and I, and I thank you for that, but like, somebody goes out there and sprays, inhales it, so does the city. I, I, it's, there's legality issues all the way around there. Now, if we hired them, then they're under city, you know? But, once again, by the time we hire out summer help now, you're talking end of July, end of August, by the time we go through the screening process and, um, I mean, next year, I'm definitely gonna push for multiple summer help, but...
We might just have to try and get them...
How comfortable is the council letting citizens go in and spray?
Yeah, I'm concerned about...
And that's something I would think you would have to talk to the city attorney about.
I'm concerned about, you know, liability also.
They want to pull by hand, but then they could strain their back, and so the city. I, I, there's always legality issues.
You can trip on the sidewalk.
Right, exactly.
So they, as far as Northridge goes, though, they're, they're gonna hit that park this week, and then they're gonna continue down the line, and then...
They're at Rock Brook now, which will probably take them...
I got another two days at Rock Brook. And then that's what, maybe, I might get it done with Mulch, or otherwise I'm just pulling weeds and I gotta move the ice down with that. It's very hard to get to the Rock Brook part with the equipment.
What do you think? Should we try and hire summer help?
I don't know if it's worth it, to be honest.
Okay.
Because of the timeline.
So, and that's fine. And I, and I understand. So, but going forward, so next year, we're gonna, we're gonna have it on the agenda for, you know, as a tickler and reminder to put out an ad for, for summer help.
Yeah, we'll be putting out summer help ads early.
The council will approve at three, but then you gotta, you gotta remember, you gotta jack the pay up on that, too. The last few years, it was what, 12, 13, and then maybe 17?
13, yeah.
The kids don't want to work for that.
Right.
Let's be honest.
How old do we need to be? Um, 18.
18?
Yep.
And you have to match McDonald's, which is...
There's always little legality issues we got there. So 18-year-olds don't want to work for $13 an hour. You hand them a weed whip, they get in their car and they leave. Let's be honest. You got, we gotta pay them 20-plus.
Well, so if that's the case, then are we gonna hire another full-time person to add to that, then, next year?
That's always what I'm gonna look into this winter is definitely looking to add staff. We're a growing town, and we've had the same amount of people in Public Works for the last 20 years. So, um, it wasn't really pushed by last Public Works Directors, but I'm going to push to get more staff hired. Permanent staff.
Okay.
Now, is there anything we can do with, um, you know, the, the company we contracted out, maybe, you know, discuss with him about?
That's a signed contract. He only has to do what's in the signed contract.
You can always amend that, too, but also, how long is that contract for?
Year. Year, this is summer.
Well, there's so many weeks. I believe it was 28.
Yeah.
Would it be in his best interest to give a little, to get a little?
But that, he's doing, that's not his full-time job right now. So, he's not available fi- five days a week. He has a full-time job. He does this mowing. Um, I know he doesn't work every day of the week, but he does the mowing, and sometimes we've had people say he's mowing on Saturdays, too, so, um...
Okay.
But nowhere in his contract was he required what day he had to mow. He just had to have the parks mowed once a week that are in the contract. Mowed and weed whipped, but not inside the playground. So that's what we're working on, or we're working on the best we can.
I, I, okay, but not inside the playground, which is fine, but he wasn't mowing outside of the fence either for outside of the fence at the hockey rink. There's two picnic tables that are there that their weeds are growing up on the outside.
He doesn't, he doesn't weed the...
He doesn't weed whip it. Oh, well, I just don't, because I...
He just said weed whip it. Yeah, he doesn't weed whip it at the community gardens. I'm sorry, people, all the grass, what he's writing to the...
I don't know. I, I just, I don't know. Maybe we should...
I've had a conversation with him about the community gardens already. He was told not to spray into the community gardens. If he, if he's continuing to do it, I'll have a conversation with him again. As far as weed whip in the community gardens...
I know that there's some issues out there with some of the things that are going on, how variable he may get it, things like that.
If we're having this problem, should we be, for next year, should we be, if we're gonna continue to outsource this, should we be looking at other companies right now for next year's service instead of being behind the eight ball for next year? If he's not gonna work out, I mean, if there's issues, and I don't know, that's more your area, but if there's issues, should we start being ahead of the game?
Right. I mean, I guess I would like to sit down and talk with staff and council more on where they want to head with this next year. I got my opinions on it, and they'll have theirs, and I think we'll move forward with something. I mean, I don't want to say my opinion right now, but...
Yeah. Yeah, we would, we would be...
We'll have a couple months...
Yeah, we were gonna review it at the end of the contract.
Okay.
We would be going out for bid again anyway.
What was that?
We would be going out for bid again anyway.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, it has to go out for bid every year, so either way. But you mentioned adopt a park. That's still valid, as far as I know.
It's, that works, kind of like basically what the highway does, correct?
Right.
And, 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 All of the volleyball courts are covered in weeds. The playground is, more importantly, covered in weeds. And that hockey rink that she just talked about, as you all have said, that the weeds are as high as the boards. There are nets inside of that rink that are hidden within all the weeds. This park is contracted by Muddy Feet Lawn Service. As she mentioned, the picnic tables that are out there, you guys can see in the pictures that they don't even move the picnic tables. They just mow around them. The Regional Park, the Community Gardens are never getting taken care of. They're never weed whipped. The retaining wall that we paid a lot of money for is covered in weeds. The grass that was planted out there by Stone's Edge for roughly twenty-eight hundred dollars is not even maintained out there. The sunflower field, outside of it, because we know that Johnny's gonna be doing whatever he's doing out there. And this park is also contracted by Muddy Feet. Carver Field, this park has been a long time battle for me personally. The previous Public Works Director and some kind, some council members may recall that I fought to have the hockey rink to stay at Carver Field, but was told by everyone that it ruins the field because of the ice that is potentially, you know, that takes care of the infield, the sanding area. But it's not really any different than snow because snow is ice, water, whatever. That field was centrally located for ball and hockey with lights, but we had to move the hockey rink out to North Ridge, which is clearly in the pictures, is not being maintained. And it cost us eight thousand dollars to put lights out there. We were told that that field, or the boards being out there would be, going out there so that they were up all year long so that we could utilize that for a soccer field, kickball or whatever. But clearly that is not being done. So I just want to recap what we have spent on this. So Muddy Feet, we paid out ten thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-seven cents in May. In June, we paid to Muddy Feet twelve thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-four cents. In April, we paid out two thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents, which the city total cost is twenty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents to Muddy Feet Lawn Service. The original contract for Muddy Feet was nineteen, eighteen, ninety-one a week, but that cost went up the following month with gas prices, which is understandable because gas is a little expensive right now. So we now pay them two thousand, five hundred and forty-three, sixty-seven a week, as Dan mentioned, whether they come here and mow or not, which that increase was six hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-six cents for very poor service, in my opinion. Two seasonal help at nineteen dollars an hour for forty hours a week, which would be times two would be about fifteen hundred and twenty dollars. That's giving the Public Works guys help that they need. If you take that fifteen, twenty by roughly ten weeks that Muddy Feet, Muddy Feet has been here, we spent, we could have spent about fifteen thousand dollars for that cost. We would have then had lawn mowing services, weed whipping, park maintenance and help for the full-time guys that are busting their butts. Instead of paying, you know, these guys that are more qualified to actually be doing stuff in the park instead of pulling weeds. Did, when you guys did this contract for Muddy Feet, did any of you think about how this would affect Public Works? How it would, because Muddy Feet going out there, the guys still have to go out to the parks. So, and Muddy Feet is really just a thirty thousand dollars almost wasted money. When these guys are still out there having to maintain what is not even in a contract. These guys are still out there busting their butts doing this. Did any of you, have any of you been out to these parks to follow up to see what you've spent our money on? Yes, that's a no.
No, I have. I have, yes.
Okay.
Don't just assume that none of us have.
Well, I wasn't getting an answer, so that's why I'm asking. Do any of you guys, I mean, I sat here tonight and I watched you both, you all approve two months payouts, twenty-two, roughly twenty-two thousand dollars to Muddy Feet, and none of you questioned it. None of you have gone out there to look and question exactly what it is they're doing. So all said and done, you guys, in my opinion again, have wasted roughly twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars in two and a half months for lawn service. And we still have half of that to go yet. When we could have just hired two or three guys to help these guys out and the town would look so much better than just having a lawn service. But nobody looked at that.
The only problem is, Michelle, we have a hard time finding somebody to come to work. That's the problem.
I understand that, but as Dan mentioned, we were paying like fourteen dollars an hour. Where if we would have upped it to at least nineteen an hour, it would have been, it might, may have helped.
You know, we pay-
But it's still-
We pay the guy at the compost pile seventeen dollars an hour. We couldn't find anybody to go sit out there, you know?
Well, nobody wants to just sit out there.
For a few hours a week.
That's another discussion, so, um, but nobody even tried. None of you even tried to look for help for these guys. You, instead, you just went ahead and hired a contracting company who is doing, they get paid no matter what to where we could have had guys helping these guys forty hours a week, all day long, accomplishing so much more.
So what if, what if we did find two kids to come in at nineteen dollars an hour and then they both decided to quit in, you know, the middle of June?
Then they have to quit.
I didn't say, well, I mean, that's usually the way it is. Summertime, it's gonna be, mostly be kids. So they come in and they quit in the middle of June. Now where are we? They've got a lot more work to do.
We could have what?
They've got a lot more work to do.
Well, they still would, but we still would have come out ahead, you know, um-
What about, what about covering them for insurance?
It's my understanding that we had a previous summer help guy potentially interested and still coming back and helping out. I'm not sure if anything has come forward.
I looked into it. I called him. He found a different job. He wasn't interested.
Okay. You know, it's just very disheartening that nobody really even tried. And with all of the construction and everything else that's going on, you guys had to know that Public Works was gonna be busy.
Yep, and it's just like every other city that I've talked to. They're all having the exact same issue. I mean, it's staffing.
Every other city at least tried to hire. I, I mean, I saw it. I don't think I don't watch it. Don't think I don't do my research on. You know, I'm not gonna come up here without my facts and figures. You know, with the construction that is going on, you had to know that these guys are gonna be swamped with everything. And nobody even tried to get them help. You know, and now we have people like me and others concerned about the parks. We have an event coming up for potential Boy Scouts and I don't even know where you're gonna park, Greg, but, you know, how does that park look? I was hoping to, our community meals start up here in August. I was hoping to see if maybe Park and Rec would do something out at the North Ridge Park like we did the summer splash. There's no way we're gonna go out to, you know? I mean, I'll absolutely help clean it up, but right now, I don't understand if the mowing out at Muddy Feet, or yeah, whatever that company's name is, why they couldn't get a push mower and go in and mow inside there? Mowing's mowing, whether it's on a rider or on a push. Why didn't we question that?
I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the photos here and a lot of it is overgrown weeds. I mean, he's not gonna run his mower through the volleyball pit. He's not gonna run it through the mulch. Yeah, maybe hindsight, yeah, maybe we should have had some contract in there or some clause in there to talk about weed whipping. But it's a, I mean, at this point, it's kind of a-
If I stand corrected here, but I think in my packets over here, it says weed whimming and trimming. Trimming is that, or mowing and trimming. Isn't trimming weed whipping, Dan?
Yep.
So that is what was written in the last packets, mowing and trimming. So why isn't this company, why are we not questioning the amount of money we just spent? You guys sit up here, I mean, I don't want to come up here every month and say, look at your accounts payable. Look at what you're spending and question twenty-two thousand dollars on very poor service.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, planning and zoning, public hearing, July thirteenth, seven PM. Park and Rec, July eighteenth, five thirty, City Hall. EDA, Tuesday, July nineteenth, twelve PM, City Hall. Council Workshop, July twenty-fifth, five PM, Community Center. And regular city council meeting, August eighth, seven PM, Community Center. Acknowledgements.
Can I make one? I would like to acknowledge some of the work you've been out and doing the best that they can with the, among the guys that they have.
I was also going to acknowledge Public Works for all your hard work lately and putting up with being short-staffed and, and everything else, so.
Like to thank the Boy Scouts for putting all the work in, specifically Greg Humans, all of this work to try to make some sort of community event happen over Montrose Days Weekend when no one thought it would be possible to be able to do it and, and you're putting it all together and, and doing all that, so. So thank you Greg and the Boy Scouts and thank you to the people that signed up to be election judges this year. Any other acknowledgements? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes four zero. We're adjourned.